Call this meeting over, this is the regular session of the Mayor Council of the City of Bisbee, County Cochise, and State of Arizona. To be held Tuesday on October 2nd, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the Cochise County Board of Supervision. Excuse me. Here in 1450 Valley Lane, building G Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Cornado, please call the row.
Councilmember Klein, here. Councilmember Joan Hansen.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor David Edgerton.
Here.
Councilmember Dale Higgins.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Douglas Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Lindstrom is excused. City staff, Robert Smith, City Manager, Ashley Cornado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Daniel Duchon, Personnel Director, Dwayne Wallace, Operations Manager, Alberni Chandler, Police Chief, George Castillo, Fire Chief, Aldo Dugno, City Attorney.
Thank you, Alice. For our invocation, this evening, I'd like us to take a moment of silence to reflect on the incredible tragedy that is going on in Indonesia right now, having to do with earthquakes, continuing earthquakes, and the tsunami that, to last I knew, a minimum of 1,200 people have perished, and they're fighting more every, literally every minute. So, if we remember them in a moment's silence. Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the central meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its two great republics for which it stands, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much. Welcome, everybody. I have a proclamation. This is a proclamation for Rose Johnson Day. Whereas Rose Johnson was born on October 2nd, 1960, in Doubletree, England, and whereas she attended Dr., I'm sorry, Dymond Ford University in, last year, sir, between 1979 and 1983, earning an honorary degree in graphic design and illustration, and whereas she moved to Phoenix in 1986, and then to Bisbee in 1998. In her newspaper interview, she described her paintings at Phoenix as "heavy and gray", a reflection of the concrete congestion and pollution of the city. Upon moving to Bisbee, she said, "When I moved to Bisbee, it was like I was lifted off the ground. My figures started to fly, and my colors came back." And whereas Rose Johnson's work spans performance arts, painting on canvas, covered doors, and murals both private and public commissions, and whereas her work includes murals around the city of Bisbee and beyond, and whereas Rose passed away on May 31st, which was June 1st in Arizona, 2009, in her beloved bowery. Rose Johnson was and will remain a Bisbee, Arizona icon, whose whimsical but passionately intense nature takes physical form in her art. A nationally recognized artist, her murals are to be found throughout the state of Arizona and beyond. We will miss her. And now therefore, be it resolved, and I, David Edgerton Smith, Mayor of the City of Bisbee, do hereby proclaim that October 2nd, 2018, be declared as Rose Johnson Day in the City of Bisbee, Arizona. And if I could, I'll ask Allison Williams to go pick this up. We have a call to the public. Mr. Shauny Hicks.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Welcome, sir.
I wanted to just make a suggestion, a cost-saving suggestion, might be kind of a small one, but I thought, I was looking through the budget, the approved payments, and I noticed in, I don't know if I can figure it here, but, that in fund expenditures for electric, so they're 2140 dash 21,000, that there are four different electric bills for 60 brewery belts, which is at the same City Park, and I'm wondering if there are four differences, brewery belt shop one, shop two, shop three, shop four. I'm wondering if that's four different services that are going there because in the past it had been rented out to different people or something like that. If those could be combined into one service, you have, you know, the minimum, you only have one minimum payment, and you could potentially save $150 approximately a month. So, it's just an idea, and I thought I'd put it out there just for you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead. We'll have, I'll ask staff to take a look at that, and we'll find out. Thank you, sir. Allison Williams, your call in public.
Hello, Mayor, Council, City staff. I'm Allison Williams, Program Coordinator for the Copper Queen Library, which is why I'm going to speak tonight, but also to thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation for Rose, and to honor her on today, her birthday. I chose her birthday and not her birthday to honor her, and thank you, Ashley, for helping with the proclamation, I really appreciate it. I, believe it or not, miss you guys, miss coming to council meetings, and I came tonight because I wanted to make a special ask for help. After many years, we are finally realizing Jason Macovey, our library manager's dream of having a haunted library at the Copper Queen Library, both floors. We're having a planning meeting on Friday, this Friday, noon to 1:00. If anybody would like to come help participate as a volunteer, as an actor, or as an idea person, or just simply if you have props or Halloween items, we have two floors that we want to fill and turn into a really exciting experience for everybody in the community as well. The Little Middle School Builders Club is going to be assisting us, and we're really excited for the students' participation. And for Aldeadros Marcos, we are having a four-week series of workshops on Friday from 1:00 to 3:00 with Rose Hall, to culminate in a parade that she does every year on November 2nd. That, too, is all ages, and so we're spending all of October celebrating both of those days. We have lots of other things going on, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention and to the community's attention, to come participate and really turn our library that's been open for 137 years, and this building that is 111 years old, into a haunted library. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask Mr. Smith, if we could make sure that Chief Castillo has dialed in on this with the Fire Marshal. Or any haunted decorations in the haunted locations. Thank you. We have accounts payable.
I move that we pay accounts payable, any amount of $101,659, and $100,000.
Thank you, I'll start with that. Do we have questions? Here we none. All votes in favor. Opinion accounts payable, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Vote taken, son. Motion carried, unanimous. Approval of the consent agenda, there's items A through E. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular session of Mayor and Council held on September 18th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. The approval of the minutes of the special session of Mayor and Council held on June 12th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. C, approval of a farm winery fair slash festival liquor license application submitted by Golden World Vineyards for an event to be held at City Park on Saturday, October 6th, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. D, approval of a farm winery fair slash festival liquor license application submitted by Asm Mun, Asputson Family Vineyard LLC, DBA Deep Sky Vineyard for an event to be held at City Park on Saturday, October 6th, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. E, approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by Community Synergy Solutions Corporation for an event to be held at Bisbee Roy Al on October 13th, 2018, from 3:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Councils, we have any special issues items? Here we none, I entertain the motion to accept the consent agenda items A through E.
I move to approve the consent agenda items A through E. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornado.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Dunn.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes, 6 to 0, unanimous. There is no business, new business, I do appreciate it. Discussion of possible approval of a contract for services with express bill pay for online bill pay services. Ms. Bagley, Finance Director. Welcome, Ms. Bagley.
Mayor and Council, this is the contract for services with express bill pay for online bill pay services. We posted the RFP for this back in August and received seven proposals. Express bill pay came in. The second goal is, with not very much of a difference between the two goal is services, and they have extensive experience with our software and with other municipalities in Arizona, so we chose them, and it should be quick and easy to get them up and running.
Thank you, Mayor. For the dedicated, anybody that might have a question, would you just quickly let us know what that means?
So, sewer garbage customers will be able to pay their sewer garbage bills online, they'll also be able to online to check their bills every month, they can sign up to get text messages for when they're billed or doing what payments have been made.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Councils, we have questions. Ms. Anderson.
I have a clarification, whether anything else. On exhibit A, under fee, I understand that we'll be paying $19 and $75 for monthly support, and we're also paying 30 cents per transaction, and any fees for checks that bounce?
Yeah, there is a per-transaction fee, 30 cents. And some of the companies that had a proposal, they, we could pass that cost down to the customers, but we felt that that wouldn't encourage people to use the service, and it will be 30 cents per transaction.
Simply, and if you kind of mind, that 30 cents is very, very cheap, as compared to our people and entering these items.
Right. And they'll also be able to, the, when people sign up, to have their checks, have their banking account send a check every month, we actually get a physical check for that. But doing it this way, we can get an electronic file, so we should cut down on, we usually get about 300 of those a month, so that's a manual entry of all of those checks.
The reason I brought it up is exactly what the Mayor said, these costs are not being given to the customer, but they will be paid off.
Any other questions, Ms. Bagley?
I move to approve a contract with express bill pay for online bill pay services.
A second.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornado.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Dunn.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes, unanimous. Item number four, discussion of possible approval of a commercial lease for 24 Main Street between the City of Bisbee and Lexon Partners LLC for the Bisbee Science Center. There she is.
This is not Emma Crowe.
I know. Ms. Gray, it's nice to see you, welcome.
Thank you. I just flew over Phoenix to see lots and lots of water, and I'm glad to see it's still green here. Do you mind if I give you just a brief update on what's happening with the Science Center before you either approve or not approve this?
Great.
I gave you each a copy of my report, so I won't go through every detail, but I just want to bring some things to your attention because I think they're pretty exciting. First of all, USDA loves us, all of us, not just me and Etta, but all of us, because we've done an amazing bit of work in a reasonably short period of time. They felt like the feasibility study was a big hit. In fact, they thought so early on, even before it was done, so they awarded us the second grant, $49,900, to enter the next phase, which is the design phase. And the way that our partnership has agreed to move into that phase, design meaning, how do we want this permanent center to function? What kind of sciences do we want to display or look at or examine, and what kind of exhibits will be exciting and interesting to the public? So, in this process, knowing that it's going to take a couple, three years to raise the funds necessary to build a permanent center, we want to use a storefront to do the research necessary to look at these questions, and find out what should we be doing, and how best to do it from a public response standpoint. So, the storefront idea is what was proposed to the USDA, and in front of you is a budget that was included with that, that proposal. And that budget includes lease, utilities, exhibits, volunteer support, public engagements with getting the public to respond to these new exhibits, supplies, furnishings, insurance, et cetera. It also includes a tremendous amount of in-kind labor. The partnership that's been working on this that includes the City of Bisbee, Freeport, UA, and My Firm, and RAIN, Rural Activation Innovation Network, program out of ASU, have all five come together, and have been working collaboratively to do this. And each of those, each of those partners brings some in-kind value to this project, and you'll see that within the budget. So, what we intend to do then, in the storefront, is to create opportunities for the public, both youth and adults, to experience science and research in a variety of ways. And one of those ways is a science cafe, where expert researchers come and talk about their research, and exhibit accompanies that at this storefront, and the public has a chance to weigh in on, is this intriguing, is it dull as dirt, you know, should we continue to think about that? One of the exciting things that's happened is, Dr. Crowebeck has developed a relationship with a virtual reality provider. The content is science-based, and having that new technology in our storefront, a benefactor has agreed to provide a number of stations and the technical assistance to keep that up and running for the period that we need it. It's going to be an amazing, if you've never tried VR, sit down the first time, don't skip it. It's really an exciting adventure. Other progress that we've made, we're still working with, Freeport, as you remember, there were two tracks of feasibility study happening simultaneously. Freeport is still on their track, and they're not suggesting they have an end date in mind yet, but once they reach that point, they'll be better positioned to know whether they want to work with us to melt these projects, or if they would continue to go along on a parallel track. In the meantime, this five-partner collaboration has agreed to go ahead and file with the state and the IRS for 501(c)(3) status. So, as soon as that has been awarded by the IRS, the 501(c)(3) will be able then to manage its own funding, to 501 manage its own funding. There are other things on the list that you have for your perusal at some other point. I wanted to show you, this is the feasibility report, this, there's a copy like this in the library. There's also a more manageable copy at City Hall and on the website, so you can always look at it from there to the, it's a very exciting project moving forward to that light of seed. So, what you have in front of you is a lease, because the city is the USDA awardee for those funds, they would also be the signature for the lease of 24 Main, which is the old San Poe Gallery, most recently the Bisbees and Rice space on Main Street. And that would be the storefront for a period of one year with an option to renew. The renewal requires a different pricing structure because for this first year, the owners have agreed to take a substantial discount based on the USDA award, so they'll accept what we have to offer, and that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good deal on Main Street these days. So, we're happy to have that lease possibility.
And the bottom line of that is, we use that, that the money has already been allocated, it's not costing the city anything, there's sufficient money for this one-year lease to cover all aspects.
Yes, and when you look at the budget, so I do want to make it clear, USDA is a reimbursement grant, so the expense has to be made, but then it's reimbursed in full. The in-kind sources on the budget are not, are primarily from other sources. The city does have two line items in the in-kind. One is the same as last, the last USDA grant, the finance department manages the reimbursement, I submit the invoices, they manage to pay those, and then they make sure the reimbursement comes. So, their time to do that is included as a city contribution. In addition, this year, we've included some time of gendarmerias at the visitor's center to help us with marketing and establishing a brand that can work side-by-side with the city, so that we can market this new venture collaboratively.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions, Council? I really want to have a quick poll, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, we're okay for the first year?
Yes.
So, what happens the second year? Do we have a plan?
Yes, we do. One of the things we want to do at the storefront is to sell retail products that are science-oriented, particularly educational products, toys, learning, learning objects, different things that both locals and tourists might be interested in, especially for their children or grandchildren. And that, because it's not a requirement this year, all sales proceeds would go into a holding account that would then allow us to pay this.
And I believe next year, he'll have a 501(c)(3), so the city won't have to manage this grant.
Right.
And so, it won't be coming back, it won't be on its own.
Right, exactly.
Mr. Jacobs. I just want to say, this is one of the most exciting things that I've seen about Jake Williams, because I've been on the council serving, and maybe, period. I'm really pumped about this Science Center, I think you guys have done a fantastic job of putting this together, and I can't wait until you get over to me.
Well, sign you up for our volunteer position. I do want to remind everybody, it was, it's been from the get-go, a collaborative effort amongst some really amazing partnerships. APS, I don't, he's gone now, but APS has been in it with money, so it's, it continues to have that kind of synergy and energy.
Thank you, Mayor.
I move to approve the commercial lease for 24 Main Street of the City of Bisbee and Lexon Partners LLC for the Bisbee Science Center.
Sorry. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornado.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Dunn.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes, unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thanks for your support.
Even if you weren't, I appreciate it.
I'll let her go.
Item five, discussion of possible approval to enter into an agreement between CenturyLink, the State of Arizona 911, and the City of Bisbee Police Department for installation of a new updated 911 system to include equipment, software, maintenance support, and training. Mr. Chief, John.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I'm in the public. Before you, it's the five-year agreement with CenturyLink via the State of Arizona for a total amount, sorry, this is really small, for a total amount of $250,000, I'm sorry, $257,27,000. This amount is paid by the State of Arizona, to CenturyLink on our behalf, to maintain our two positions for our PSAP, that's our 911 center. The money is paid for by the state, it includes funding for the two positions, a total of $2,000 a month is what they pay for those two positions, to CenturyLink. It also covers an upgraded system, which will, in turn, get us closer to the text to 911 services currently coming built.
So, the good news is that you're saying, Chief, it doesn't cost the city any money?
Doesn't cost the city any money.
Chief's kind of right in his chase.
My favorite price.
So, I wanted to make sure we highlighted it. Council, questions, Chief?
I just have to say, that was the longest agreement I had as well.
Yes. Quite a jump. It is, I just wanted to make sure that I specified, it is a five-year agreement, 60 months for this, this service.
You're in penalty clause. If you get out early, you get open.
Mayor?
Sure.
Yeah, that's why I'm very lenient, so I guess you and, or turn me and others, have reviewed this. It seemed like there was a lot of nickelies that, that kind of exempted the provider of anything that might happen at all, they're exempt from some, I mean, it was certainly a very lengthy document.
It is.
Well, this is a five-year agreement, I guess, my question is, what do you see in terms of the City of Bisbee becoming part of the Cochise County National Communication Center, being touted so heavily in our media, right now by our sheriff and the City of Sierra Vista and so forth? How do these two things?
Well, yeah, so the City of Sierra Vista and Cochise County, they before operated their own independent dispatch centers with their own PSAPs. They have essentially combined the two organizations to become CCOM, which now falls under Cochise County as a regional dispatch center. We approached them, and we were offered the ability to come onboard with them at CCOM for the cost of, I believe it's $192,000 a year, for them to charge us to become part of CCOM, which is a pretty, pretty high amount. And so, that being as high as it is right now, that's not something that I, that I feel like is in the best interest of the department to move that direction. This agreement will bring us up to speed with 911 and the updated 911 that we need to continue to operate, and allow us to continue to work forward with CCOM. It'll allow CCOM to get up and running and work all the bugs out, as in, you know, in any brand new organization starting off, all the issues that they have or have to deal with, they can work all that out, and they can give deal with, they can work all that out, and they can give us time to maybe revisit that in the long run in the future. But until then, we're still secure as our own standalone system.
Okay. Yeah, hopefully, they can get their act together. They're going to find, get along. Any other questions? Sorry, Chief?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, here we go. Do we have a question?
I move to allow the mayor and council to go into an agreement between CenturyLink and the State of Ariz, CenturyLink and the State of Arizona 911 and the City of Bisbee Police Department for installation of a new updated 911 system to include equipment, software, maintenance, support, and training.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cardinal, please.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Henderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Protonda?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Item number six, discussion of possible approval of an engagement letter for legal representation regarding employee grievance hearings for Susanna Better. And this would be Daniel Duchesne, our personnel director. Welcome, sir.
Mayor Council, thank you. So we have an employee that went, was involuntary terminated, and went through the grievance stages, and now it's in the third stage, which is the Civil Service Commission hearing, which we're in progress with scheduling. As members of the Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, part of that benefit is legal representation from Pierce Coleman. There are employment attorneys that specialize in grievance hearings to represent the city, working with the city attorney. This, they could provide representation across as well, if they recommended to have continuity representation if it goes beyond to the next stage. So this is an agreement to retain them as an engagement letter to have them represent us for that specific.
Right. As I asked, sir, you know, the cost of the city is room and board.
Correct. So the attorney fees, the actual fees for the attorney is covered through the risk pool, but you have to pay the cost. So that would be, I believe, it's mileage, lodging, and copies, and that's projected to be more than $500,000.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, ma'am?
Do we know about how long it will take the hearings? How long will the process be?
Yes, it's scheduled to be a one-day hearings.
A one-day?
Yeah, and I'm, we're trying to get them scheduled for the middle of October. Just wanted to secure a date with all parties and the Civil Service Commission. Hopefully, that will be scheduled by May of this week. The party requested a one-day, full-day hearing.
Any, any other questions? Hearing done, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the engagement letter with Pierce Coleman, PLLC, to represent the City of Bisbee and the Civil Service Commission for the grievance hearing for Susan Better.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cardinal.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Henderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Protonda?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, discussion of possible approval of an engagement letter for legal representation regarding employee grievance hearing for Michael Turet. Mr. Duchesne.
Mayor Council, so this is the exact same engagement letter for a different Civil Service Commission hearing with a different employee, but it's the same. Attorney through the risk pool, and the fees are paid, and we would be responsible for the costs, and that's projected to be more than $500,000. So it would be $500 for each of us.
For each. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing done, do we have a question?
I move to approve the engagement letter with Pierce Coleman, PLLC, to represent the City of Bisbee and the Civil Service Commission employees grievance hearing for Michael Turet.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cardinal.
Councilmember Klein?
Councilmember Henderson?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Protonda?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Duchesne. Item number eight, discussion of possible approval of a fire inspector job classification. Let me, I have, Ms. Jacobino, you've signed up for eight and nine. Do you want to speak now, or?
I do want to wait because I might get my questions answered. Is that possible?
It is.
Okay. Because if my questions can answer, then I'll speak.
All right. Mr. Duchesne, hopefully, you answer your question.
I hope so as well. Mayor Council, so this is the job description for the fire inspection, or fire inspector position we've been discussing, and this was included in the IFL 1819 budget. And a little about when I do bring the job descriptions to council, so this is part of the HR process, and the council reviews and approves the job description itself, but the job description is not part-time or full-time. That's decided in the budget that the council decides. This is just the position itself, the duties, the requirements, that type of thing. So this is the job description for the fire inspector position, has the required knowledge, the minimum requirements, the duties, environmental factors, and equipment to be used, so that when we do fill these positions, that's what that individual will be doing. And in this year's budget, I believe there were two part-time fire inspectors.
Questions, councilman?
I have a good question.
Yes, Ms. Knight.
Currently, how many fire inspectors do we have with the department? I guess it would be more for the chief.
I believe at this time, we have seven.
Seven?
And she goes, there are seven that have that certification as a collateral duty. Correct. So their, their primary position is firefighter. This position is purely fire inspector, so they will have no EMT, paramedic, or firefighter duties.
And they will not be PSP or S.
Correct. I should have started with that.
Chief, of those seven, they're all Inspector Ones, except for, do we have one or two Inspector Twos?
I believe they're all Inspector Ones, except for Lieutenant Richardson, who uses that.
And he uses fire marshal inspection. Inspector Two.
Correct.
And the state requires that Inspector Two in place to oversee the work of the Inspector Ones.
Correct.
Yes, sir. Okay, questions? Ms. Knight?
Okay. If we have, I mean, do we have that many businesses where we would need more than the current seven that we have?
Currently, right now, the inspectors that we have, they're just inspecting new business, they're trying to get a new business license. That's what our inspectors right now are inspecting, is for the new business. The current businesses now cannot be inspected, like certain businesses out there that have annual or yearly inspections. For example, child care centers, and I believe it's hospitals and all that stuff that we go and inspect annually. But as other businesses in town, you know, I mean, they don't need to inspect it just the new businesses all this time.
So then, I guess this would be for the city manager. Would these be just for new businesses, or, I mean?
Great question.
Mayor, thank you, council. The code that we currently have adopted indicates all commercial ventures are to be inspected every year, and I don't think we've ever done that. There's Airbnb as well that we need to evaluate to determine at what frequency should we be inspecting them for safety. And I think, given the nature of the tasking with the inspectors that are currently on the force, their primary responsibility is response, and they don't have the time or the numbers to be able to take on that kind of inspections load and get the job.
Okay, so then, will these two part-time inspectors, will they be working everyday part-time hours? Will one work for X amount of time, and then another one work? I mean, how is that going to schedule in?
Right, because I think the chief and his crew are probably most effective at scheduling their resources out, and that's up to the fire department, to schedule those part-time workers within the confines of ASRS and Arizona's part-time restriction.
And then the, I really don't see here a plan in place as to how we can monitor it. I think is there, can we add in there that we'll do this for, you know, six months and, you know, and revisit it to see if, you know, these inspectors are needed for part-time? Are they now to bump up to full-time?
We would certainly be seeing that in the, in the legislature department. I mean, justification for those rotations for the fire department would come at, would come with numbers that, you know, they're either needed or they're not needed based on how many numbers of inspections they've actually done, and the revenue that they may have brought in.
Okay, so can we put that in there? That we would review it at much of time, or say smart, I mean, however we can word it?
If a night, I think the best folks to probably provide intelligence to us on that would be the department, and I would rely on the chief and the fire marshal to provide information relative to how many inspections they're performing, what the loads are that are borne by the part-time inspectors, and whether or not we're meeting the code requirement that we're inspecting all of the commercial ventures within the city, chief.
Anything else?
Yes, well, basically, we would be doing an inspection of all commercial properties in the city on a yearly basis.
Yes.
And that would include Airbnb.
It's my understanding it would, but I've got to touch base with legal on any legislation that may have been passed recently by the state. I am the chief, I think most see eye to eye that all Bisbee particularly is under a significant threat of imminent fire, and that continuing vigilance within all Bisbee is critical to us maintaining a safe and healthy environment.
Mayor, there is a fee in terms of having the inspection to pay for the positions.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And certainly, I certainly, this is something they need for some time, to go on the inspector if their business changed hands or sold, and there certainly have been complaints to be, or these concerns expressed about the employees saying this is an unsafe place to work, this is needing inspection. What can we do in terms of education for residential? I guess that's the other part of this. Certainly, some of the fires that we've had, a little education could have been prevented, and certainly, fire prevention.
Unfortunately, you know, fire prevention is not, inspections aren't required at residential structures, as you know, and so that's where fire education comes in, and it's often done through the fire marshal's office and through the fire inspectors themselves. Educational programs in schools, particularly, particularly elementary and junior high middle schools, pardon me, is the place that that's done now. So that certainly could be looked at down the road with these positions. Also, these types of positions that are present in other cities also double as public, some of them double as public information officers for schools and so forth, much like ASRO.
How about the inspection and condemnation of fire hazards? You know, I mean, and other, that situation.
Well, as a matter of fact, that would, when, obviously, they would be working in those cases, typically, with building inspector, and could go in, and each from their own position of both authority and knowledge. And so it does, we do have that currently with the fire department, but again, they're undermanned.
Correct.
And often busy on other, other jobs. There's still potential of these two positions actually being able to expand into some other things that fire prevention needs to happen.
So that could be part of the condemnation for the fire hazard, something that we look forward to, sure?
Well, I don't know, we can look forward, not look forward to, correct? That's part of the game plan, I think.
Yes, ma'am?
But we don't know what the fees will be to.
No, that's, that's going to come up. Ms. Klein, we batted that around to bring to council, and it's not ready because it's been decided that all the things that need to be changed are going to be brought into us all at once, so that we can go through them. Otherwise, they're scattered all over the city code, and we have to go back and change every single one of those, so we're looking to do them at once. But those fees generally are, as an example, only $50 for up to X amount squared B, and over X squared B is like $100. Those are typically the way that those fees are set up.
Okay, so then, as far as if a building is not, if brought to code or whatever, okay, so then, the, this inspector or these inspectors will issue the fines, or will that come from the building inspector, or will it come from our fire marshal, or how is that going? How will they be given their?
Well, that's going to be up to the chief as to, as to exactly how he delegates that authority, but they would have that authority, being employees of the city and being qualified inspectors. But that would be up to the chief, the city manager, that is, delegating it.
But they're not, I guess I have a concern with where they can conduct practice fire drills, and of course, they have to keep abreast of the, you know, current codes and firefighting procedures, but they're not firefighters.
That is, very often, in these cases, they're retired fire guys.
But not office?
No, no, certainly not office. It's the building inspectors from different jurisdictions, they may be commended.
If a night, Mayor Council, HR working with the chief have the ability to vet through respective applicants and select call back goes to do the job. The chief in the department's very well versed in firefighting and getting through the IBC and the fire codes out there, where we have a very competent fire marshal. I don't see a difficulty in filling those slots with people who know what they're doing.
Yeah, we have a benefit, this is type of operations in the cities.
And I guess my last concern is that because we currently have the seven, with these new part-time, are they going to supersede our inspectors, or?
What do you mean by supersede?
Will they take over their functions? I mean, these, these men have gone out and certified, you know, gotten certified in by inspection, and now.
They would still, they would still be inspect. They would still have, their certification would be taken away from them. But the fact is, is they don't have the time right now to conduct those, those inspections. And so these people do nothing but these inspections. So by supersede, these guys would probably be the first, if they're on duty, the first to go out and inspect. But I mean, that's my guess, that's up to the chief and the fire marshal as far as deploying. and the fire marshal as far as deploying.
Mayor, that was a point I wanted to make. From the administrative side, the chief's in charge of deploying his manpower and scheduling it appropriately, and we found a need for these positions, and I, I think we should rely on the chief and the fire marshal to deploy the.
Excuse my voice, but chime in. I've spoken to Chief Castillo about this, and one of the things that he related to me was that a lot of times when his guys are out there doing fire inspections, they actually don't get to finish them. They're pulled off because they have an emergency call that comes in. So a lot of times, if they are doing the inspections, they don't even get to finish them. So I think that's another reason to try to get these part-time people in.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you also just clarify for me, and chief here as well, when you do an inspection, you're also then somehow communicating to the department what you encountered in particular in terms of our unusual strike buildings?
Okay.
What they can expect then, at the inner particular building, what they can expect to find there that would ensure their safety and their effectiveness. And how is that communicated? I mean, is there a report, is a report developed as involved inspection that then is passed on to clarifiers, or how is that done?
There is an inspections report, and there are any unusual things would be relayed to the fire marshal, and then it would be typically the fire marshal that disseminates that information to the troops. That may be done through drawings. Down the road, they go into tablets, so it'll be done on tablets, so they can just, when they are going to an address, they'll know if there's odd things that have happened. But otherwise, it would be done in writing and press, as I understand. Is that right, Chief?
Correct.
Yeah, it's kind of a pre-plan, it's called, so yes. Anything else?
Just one question.
Sure.
And like council member said, because of nature of a lot of buildings, particularly in all this being, and growing over the years, this, this second cause, like a undue burden on, on the owners of these properties, they're not going to be expected to comply with, I know the fire standards are part of the fire standards, and they apply to everything, but the complexity of our buildings over there, of course, can be taken into consideration when we're doing these inspections. We're not going to ask people to like, come up with some standards that are not reasonable for them to be able to.
Most times, these fire inspections have to do with things like electrical cords and, and the emergency exit sign as it lives, and those kind of things that aren't burdensome.
Yeah, like for example, probably some buildings don't have back doors.
That is correct.
You know.
And they're, they're typically.
Built this, in this state.
Those are typically grandfathered, grandfathered in service.
Yeah, that's, that's my question. I think it's my answer.
We good?
I saw a couple. Can I?
Yes, Mayor.
Tony, Jack, you know, most of the questions were answered, but I still have a couple. Is there not an overposition that's still waiting to be filled? And if that's the case, isn't that going to take someone of the load off and maybe relieve the fact that you need part-time? My other, I guess, big question.
Let's go one at a time.
Oh, I know what you're going to answer, I know what you're going to answer, sorry.
No, it is being filled. I believe you, you, why don't you, why don't you say?
Yeah, at this time, we're currently seeking the lower position. Dan's offered it from our last testing list, two guys, one, I believe, never returned a call.
Or found a complaint.
Yeah, found a complaint. So we either got to look back, if we can, to the prior test, I think it was back in January, if that's eligibility list is available, or we have to open up the position again and test.
Okay, but it is being filled.
Yes.
Great. See, I just spoke, I just spoke to you and I, you understand? It had, yeah. All right, Ms. Jack, do you?
My other question that hasn't been addressed is wages, what are they going to be brought in? Are they going to be brought in above our current employees? Is there a possibility that your part-time people are going to be brought in above our already existing paid people, and if so, that's going to cause a problem, would it not? Because when you already have people that are certified making less than what you possibly bring in, because there hasn't been any mention about what starting is. And based on other jobs on that occurs, it causes a lot of problems, that's just.
Right. And then we look at the new people coming in will not be on a retirement system, and so, but these are part-time people. Nineteen and a half out?
Yes.
And so sometimes pay is, is higher, but there are no wages, I mean, I'm sorry, but there are no fringe benefits attached to that. But I can't answer that at this particular point. I don't have that answer.
Sure. I basically wages, looking at the fire inspector wages across the state from the Department of Labor data, the range, it, all the job descriptions have annual salary there, but the part-time ones would be based off hourly. So it's, if you look at what the fire inspectors make across the state, this is on the low end. So it's based on what the wages are across the state. And unfortunately, across the state, the low end of fire inspectors, that starting wage is higher than where we start the firefighters at, or if they want to be lower, I'm not sure if we'd be able to fill that position.
The fire inspectors have a, do they not have a five percent bond for that certification?
Not currently. I'm working with the fire chief. I'd like to get that.
I thought they were supposed to. I'd like to get that from myself.
Okay, that, that should.
And that, that might change things some way.
Yeah, I'd have to support that, so we'll go back and review your certification and see what adjustments to the policy will be.
All right, thank you.
Kind of feeding off his answer, not to be too snarky, but what is, how, how do our firefighters rank based on, he just said, going with the low end, do our firefighters even rank off the low end of the state, or are they below the low end? Because again, if you're basing it off the low end of the state, and you pay firefighters at that, I mean, fire inspectors at that rate, and ours aren't even at the low end of the state, that's going to be an even worse significant again, slant on them as far as pay goes, it's just a question. My last question, I guess, is, is it going to adversely affect their hours, the guys that are doing it now, or are they still going to stay on a specific set of hours, based on the strictly firefighters or if they're ambulants, or emergency, I should say? Is there going to be an effect on that? Are they going to lose hours bringing in more people, or is there down to support those hours that they need to do?
I don't know.
Currently, right now, when there is inspections, we usually just have people that are on duty that are certified inspectors go on duty and inspections. So there's, you know, what time and things like that.
And therefore, they're deployed without getting down.
Right, so usually, just right now, we, Matt, you know, on duty is six, we usually have, if we have six, we have Guy on call, Brandon says seven, because at seven, that's our operations, more to your number of facility transports as well. Usually, like you said, they're usually done on duty.
Then answer your questions, gentlemen.
Well, I have one question. My last question is, I'll make sure this is the last question. With that said, will the current fire, fire inspectors have that opportunity to come in at that part-time pay also, or is that too much of a conflict with the pay scale that they're at? So saying they're not scheduled to work as a fire, as a regular fire, will they be able to tap into that?
Yes.
Completely separate. That's it.
Okay, counsel.
I move to approve the job classification for the fire inspector.
I second that. We have motion to accept it, votes in favor, second by the state of the House.
Aye.
Aye, opposing side. That would be tied to one. Item number nine, possible discussion approval of an ambulance driver job classification. Mr. Duchesne?
Mayor, council, so much like the previous item, this is just the job description, so the program and the amount of positions and part-time or full-time type will still need to be defined by council. But this is a new program that the chief was talking about in the fire department as well, for ambulance driver, EMT position. So this would be an ASRS, non-PSPRS position that would not have firefighting duties and would only respond to medical calls, but mostly help with the, the inner facility transports. And I believe the goal is to be able to accept more of those because of current staffing, there's times where we have to turn it down, and then it goes over to the private company. The addition of this position should be of the help of that, so it would also have the potential to generate.
Thank you. Questions? Yes?
You just said that they're going to be an ASRS?
Yes. Ambulance driver, yes.
Okay, so then we're looking at full-time.
If, if they're full-time.
Well, that's what I'm asking, are we looking at?
He, he, he started off mitigating, and we are approving a job classification. We're not approving full-time or part-time. If they are full-time, they'll be ASRS. If they're part-time, they will not.
Okay, so there will still potentially be retirement obligation, whether it's state retirement or public safety retirement, correct?
Correct, if the council approves a full-time position. This is just the job description. So much like the, the fire inspector position, the job description is passed, but in the budget, council requested to part-time. So there, there's no retirement liability.
Ms. James?
So these ambulance drivers, they could be their full-time or part-time. And also, would they be responding to calls like throughout the day by working in conjunction with the fire department, answering calls? Would they like to be riding along with, with our fire department?
Well, they would be able to.
Riding ambulants to emergency calls, or is that, or is there, they're going to be doing like transfers mostly?
Mostly for transfers, but they can be used for a medical response, for a 911 response to respond with us, since they are certified EMTs. They can treat with us on scene, and they can also transport. I'm rarely, I'm saying, but mostly want to utilize them for facility transports. So we can keep, usually when we send the transporter, we send two firefighters, either firefighter EMT and firefighter paramedic. This will actually leave a firefighter back. We could send the EMT driver, so they actually have a firefighter that stays back, that we can realize because we get a fire. Because the EMT driver, if we get fired, they can't, they can't fight fire. They're just going to stand around in their local room.
It does, that's why the PSPRS doesn't kick in.
So when we had the discussions at budget time regarding the ambulance driver, that was my understanding that they would be used only for transfers. But in, in this job description, they basically have, they would be just one of the EMTs, but again, a firefighter, to where they can conduct trainings and public education, you know, go to the schools and, you know, stuff like that for, so, so this really isn't just an ambulance driver for transfers?
Well, that's what we usually, mostly want to utilize them for is just for transports. But if we are short EMT, they can actually just act, perform just as an EMT. If we call, then we can send two firefighters and that EMT driver on just a medical call if necessary. But our main purpose for this program is for transports.
Any other questions?
So the job classification itself should be flexible enough so that the chief would have the ability to use them as he saw, depending upon the circumstances. And there would be like, okay, this is all you're going to do, you can't do your job. So, so the job classification should be going to, that would give you guys the flexibility to, you know, to be able to use them as, you know, as they're just like that. So, I think that's part of the reason why it's drawn forward, and how we think. And the other thing is increased ability for responding to external facility transfer, thereby increasing revenue. There's no guarantee with that at all. In fact, I think, I think transfer money is down for this year. Is that so?
I would have to look. Pardon me? I'd have to look.
Well, I believe there was an article when.
That, 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 I can answer that. Okay. Because every town receives. Ah, yeah. So I don't know. That's, that's good for Ms. Swan also. The Medicare had held back our money, and so at that particular time, it was since Medicare has paid that money, and so it is now caught up. Okay, so you're right, it was right, everything was right at that particular time, but now the, the money has been freed, and so it's no longer correct. What was that?
And Mayor, I asked Carrie for some, some details this evening, and she did cover that. There are still payments coming in, so we're, we're not at the end of that revenue yet. I have asked the chief in response to this particular set of positions to begin to keep track of the second calls that we're able to service because we have these positions. We want to be able to report that performance to council once we get this discussed.
All of these positions have to be justified or not, but the only way to do so is to?
The only issue we would have on a second transport, we usually have two paramedics that are working on shift, usually one at the old busy station or EMT station. Sometimes we have two medics, or we have three medics, but it just depended on the back-to-back transports. If there's only two, we only have two medics working, there aren't one, and another one kicks out, and we don't have another medic to go, we would have to turn that down because we can't, we're severely unprotected and they're not covered. Unless we get some paramedics to apply for that position as well, I'm not sure what they are there.
And, well, then that brings up another question. Could our current employees, since it's not PSPRS, couldn't they apply or recall then on, say, their four days off or something like that?
What was the question?
If, if the current employees, maybe on their four days off or, you know, a day off or, or whatever, couldn't, could they, or could they not apply for the part-time ambulance driver, since it's not the same retirement system?
No. PSPRS indicates that a PSPRS employee cannot be employed off-duty in any kind of job that has substantially the same or functions.
And they couldn't go under, say, like a stipend rather than state retirement?
All I know, Ms. Klein, is I have tried everything possible with PSPRS in discussing just those things, hoping that we could bring that just in, and all these other people trying to, to do justice, and the answer is no. So, I mean, that, that's from PSPRS board, it's certainly not from me. Certainly not from me. But, uh, you know, that, no, it was, it's the same as like, um, a police officer working off-duty in a different jurisdiction. You can't be done.
Okay, then, um, I guess, just another, um, actually, for Mr. Hughes. Since he was a big union man, how does that, if we've got, you know, union jobs here and then we have a non-union coming in essentially doing the same job? How does that-
You're asking me.
Uh-huh. You're the union guy.
Um, I don't have the answer for you. No, so our circumstance has, uh, changed, uh, your cultures are different. You know, there's, uh, the only rules a union has, that, you know, a union has is where they can negotiate. And it's, it's not, uh, you know, it's council people. It's not our place to, uh, you know, to get involved in, uh, the union. Or, you know, uh, I, I understand what you're asking me. But, uh, are, are you, you're more or less saying, are we bringing in SCAS to do the-
No, that's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm asking. I'm just asking how it, how it works.
Pardon me?
I'm just asking how it works. It's-
How it works here in Bisbee, in Arizona, oh, in Arizona, right, right towards state. I would probably draw the laws here. In fact, I, you know, in Arizona, I'm assuming that they barely exist.
Do we have a motion?
Well, I just, I have one question. I will sign up for both. I have-
Yes, you were, I'm sorry, I left you too, Carrie.
That was awesome. I have one question. So when it comes to budget cut, we start talking about having to cut positions from part-time, so they'll be the first ones cut? Or are we gonna look at cutting full-time? Are they gonna be the first on the chopping block?
Well, you'll, you'll be up here as one of the people-
Well, I know, so I just wanna know if there's been anything mentioned about? Um, has that been suggested or has that been talked about?
Hasn't been talked about.
Okay, just a question.
Mayor, just wanna make a general comment and that is that, um, seems that we really need to work closely together, council, city manager, chief, firefighters, sort of looking at ways at which we can increase revenue, control costs. Um, certainly the article that was referred to in terms of Bisbee or also reported, the fire department last year had came over budget of $180,000. Last year, I believe, I think it was fiscal, fiscal year 2016, we were $232,000 over budget. And 2017, $178,000 over budget. I don't know how that happens, but the point is that it's not financially sustainable and that concerns me. Whether, we certainly have used reserves, we may have recovered that, but we're out of reserves. And if we don't have strategies for making a fire department financially sustainable, then we risk, uh, the high-quality service that we now receive from them. And we risk, uh, keeping, uh, employing those, those individuals. And that concerns me. I don't know how this happens and we can, that this particular department can continually be over budget or other departments are expected to keep within budget. Uh, and that we're not proposing strategies as these, uh, in terms of working together in terms of how can we make that department financially sustainable? So that we ensure that long-term support of our firefighters.
Mayor?
Sure.
Could I jump in, counsel, if I'd like? Um, both of the position classes that have been proposed, you've both through the budget process as well as this evening for consideration, are a step in that direction towards sustainability because both of those positions, we believe, will create revenue.
Correct.
And so rather than creating positions that are 100% a drain on the department, these positions will bring in revenue. We've also taken measures to provide the department with the ability to provide services outside of our municipal jurisdiction and to receive additional revenues from that. I think we're on the right track, but it takes time actually to make that progress. And so I, I think that this is a, a critical element of moving in that direction where we're generating revenue through the department. I, I certainly want to encourage the department to generate those revenues where it's appropriate within the code, within what they've been given. And I think we need to give them the chance to do it.
And I would like to, uh, also mention and thank the, uh, the union for working with us on these, uh, on these items. Thank you. Anything else, counsel? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the job classification for ambulance driver.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by stating aye. Aye. Abode, same side?
Aye.
Motion passed, signify to one. Uh, item number 10, thank you, Mr. Duchesne, and chief. Uh, item number 10, city manager, please.
Um, could you put that slide up, please? Um, I asked Ashley to put a slide up. We're, we're heading into a finalization of our documents for, uh- Oh, you're kidding? Okay.
Just any other thoughts before, Joe?
Um, I'll try to be quick. Uh, we're in the middle of budget preparation right now. So we're closing out the year, looking at the performance of our, of our funds. And I wanted to go over some of the numbers. Uh, you've seen some numbers in the paper, but aren't all of the numbers. Um, and there are some changes that our auditors require of us that actually made it difficult, I think, from the outside looking in and determine whether or not sales taxes came in the way they should. Um, I, in general, uh, because we're having to report sales taxes within some of the funds, they don't all show up in the same place that they used to. When you aggregate our sales taxes together to budget, we did 111%, uh, we did 11% over budget on the sales tax revenues for this last year. Um, similarly, uh, while we do have some cost overruns in some departments, most departments were operating in a cash positive position. At the end of the year, I think we're showing that we're, uh, very close to breaking even, if not over, uh, by a couple hundred thousand within this last budget year. Uh, and in our prior message, um, I, I did indicate that, uh, you know, our budget this year is smaller and our budget next year is smaller. And our margins are a little bit tighter. Uh, and our performance on controlling expenditures and bringing revenues has started to increase. Um, and I have numbers for that, but we-
I'm working on that.
We can't get it. Um, while, while the machines are waking back up, I did wanna invite, uh, Dwayne to make a few comments as well. As you know, he was promoted to operations manager. Uh, he's been helping me with significant issues in the public works department. And I'd like him to catch you up on recent progress there.
Uh, thank you, sir. Um, really quick, I'll do my best to kind of compress this. There's a lot going on in public works. Um, we, we have, uh, did the initial round of interviews for public works director. We narrowed the initial group that was over 10 to about seven for phone interviews. Out of those seven, we narrowed those down to three candidates for face-to-face interviews. And we should be doing, doing the face-to-face interviews within the next two weeks and hopefully make our decision. Um, the 10-town drainage project is underway, phase one. Uh, phase two is under engineering and will be receiving funding for phase two of that project, uh, towards the end of this month. We'll be able to proceed on that, which actually is some paving of their streets and some actual drainage in the roads. Uh, there was an RFQ committee that did select some, out of, uh, candidates in companies for operation and maintenance of the wastewater stream in the facility. Uh, that, that facility consisted of myself, Joe Ward, and retired public works director, Russell Conlon. Uh, we selected Jacobs Engineering and we are currently negotiating pricing specifics with them. Uh, they will be in town for the next couple days, a whole bunch of them, touring the plant from one end to the other, categorizing every piece of equipment we have and developing maintenance and everything. And I would look forward, uh, for probably the, the second half of the month, possibly a special meeting once we get the numbers nailed down. We should, we should be finishing that up, uh, within a week or two and then be able to bring that to council for selection, consideration. Um, we are, we're prob, we are currently, uh, doing the inspections and installation of 20 more shut-off valves for a total of probably over $300,000 and, and past due in arrears. Um, within the next 30 to 45 days, um, they will, they, well, they will be getting letter sooner than that, but we, if they don't pay, they will be getting shut off like, just like the last round of, uh, I believe, six, um, that we did shut off. Um, we did, uh, also request an updated PTR with pricing from Pace Engineering. Um, to try to see, because we had some meetings with them and found out that the wire was terminated. And we had already given them a lot of money to do an engineering report. And, uh, I've asked them for some pricing on updating that report to, to some things that we need now. So possibly we can budget that for next, uh, next year as improvements in wastewater in the current plant. Um, Streets is handover replacements all over town. Um, we're also gonna be doing some drainage improvements here in San Jose, at the San Jose Wash. Uh, specifically herder growth where that dip is. Um, this winter, we're gonna rip it up and force some more concrete, some Irish-shaped concrete with rebar. So hopefully you can withstand the water a little bit better. Um, there's also a major issue in Old Bisbee on Tumso Canyon Road between Moon and Star. Uh, Tumso Canyon is sinking alongside the drainage ditch. Um, we selected one of the companies that we already have a contract with for engineering. Um, because of the emerg, the emergent nature of it, um, they did get the notice to proceed from myself and that will be coming to you with council. That will be paid through, uh, out of Streets Fund, uh, for the initial engineering. Um, and hopefully we can get that fixed. I've asked for a survey done for bridge to bridge so that we're, you know, get another, uh, a joint section instead of just replacing one little part with bridge to bridge. So hopefully within the next few years, we can have something, uh, the types that we bridges up to as well. Um, here comes the fun stuff. Sanitation, we've already started switching out some commercial dumpsters for rollouts because there are some of these commercial dumpsters have been habit of illegal dumping. So we spoke with business owners and we'll, we'll be able to limit their legal dumping there. We're gonna, uh, there's a lot of duplication of services we're gonna remove. Some people have a dumpster and a roll-off and there's no point for both. We're removing that. Recycling, I, I've put it on the recycling crews to do better. Um, until we have an actual, a hardcore plan or a set plan on what we can do in recycling, um, I, I've started to pull all the off or out-of-city limits recycling bins that have no business being there. Um, I've told them to start emptying out the, the bins completely. And if there's trash in them, then we need to know so that we can empty them out and to try to improve their customer service. Um, we're also looking at possibly going to one day, we pick up in Old Bisbee. We think we can do it? Um, we're also considering limiting and, uh, removing the inmates and going back to two full-time employees in Old Bisbee because they can get, they're outdone at half the time. Um, and we believe that there's cost savings. We have to look at the specifics on that. Um, and lastly, for sanitation, I found a different supplier of rollouts. Um, that is a national contract that was able to give us the sign-up for. Uh, right now, well, in previous years, we would drive all the way to, either way to pick them up. I'm able to get them cheaper delivered to our yard. Um, so I've, I've worked that out. But it probably only saved a couple hundred bucks, but that's, it's a couple hundred bucks. Um, I'm waiting for the sample to make sure they actually do what we want them to do. And Parks is doing what Parks does. They're, uh, they're doing their winter seating, um, uh, so, some of the landscaping. And also, we're, we're going to be getting a grant for about $50,000 for lighting at City Park. And that's gonna be going to the Parks Commission for some, um, approval of the lighting plan that, uh, that a local architect donated his time for. Uh, we have a really nice, uh, lighting plan. Once I have the specifics on that, I will also present that to council. And that's it.
I'm going to City Park, uh, Grassland Park.
Awesome, that meant Grassland Park, sorry. So-
Happy to have Mr. Wilson, yes.
And Mayor, just to, just to cap off some of that, uh, the DOC labor, we have a meeting with the prison board. Um, we're changing a little bit about how we take advantage of DOC labor. And I've reached out to Tom Wigg in the school district. I think he has, uh, some part-time employees that he might be able to offer some work to, um, and get some of our interior, uh, custodial support work done by part-time folks and, uh, not DOC labor. Um, and we would also remark that Dwayne had a great idea about equally identifying the rollouts so that we don't have rollouts that roll around. Right now, people seem to kind of go get whatever they need from wherever neighbors are out there. Um, Dwayne's also helping with the, the historic designation of Route 80 here in town. We may be bothered with that. Uh, and he's helping me transition whoever the new public works director is into FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Planning. We're in the middle of, uh, dragging Hazard Mitigation Planning bills, essentially come to you guys to help prioritize risks and help us figure out where to come up with money to address some of the long-term infrastructure issues we have here in Bisbee. Um, lastly, I, I just wanted to cover the numbers that are up on the screen. Um, I have my glasses with me, I can't read them. But we can, you know. Just really quick, um, you'll see the general fund revenue versus expenditure is a net, uh, positive number of 2.2 million. Now, that's inflated because the insurance money's bounced into there. Uh, but we did spend 500,000 out of the insurance money, which only leaves about 2.1 left. So the fact that we've got 2.2 left in the general fund means, hey, we're in the black there. Um, wastewater is, uh, showing a, a net positive for the first time in a long time of, of 490,000. Um, with depreciation, though, that pushes it back into a negative, uh, footprint of 800, negative 800,000. We're hopeful that the financing that would just effectively offset much of that and bring it into the black. Um, sanitation is about breaking even. It's, it's about 11 grand under, uh, in the, in the red. Uh, Streets is breaking even and those surplus funds are, I think, are actually being used for some repairs. Airport, uh, is roughly breaking even. The bus, uh, we continue to have a commitment that we have to make there. It's about 87 to 90,000. We're showing 87 here. All of these numbers are not finalized yet through the audit process. And we will bring that to you when we get through the end of the year or we tie the numbers down and we show the transfers that are necessary. We'll bring that to you so that you can see it. Uh, the Queen Line is always is generating, uh, money in the black. Uh, we're showing a net of about 130,000 there in the black. So total, uh, when you look at all the funds across the entire town, we're in the black by 2.7 million, but that 2.6 million in insurance money is in there. So we're in the black, 100,000, less whatever we spent of the insurance money, which is about 500,000. So it looks like we're in the black by about 600,000.